Alright, I'm gonna open the public hearing at 6:00 PM. Or 2198 Main Street. You're up.
Good evening. I'm a little old with the noise of the state. We recently moved to that. Our last time here in front of the planning board is 26th official use permit to move from our location at 2388 Main Street to start rebuilding of a 2198 Main Street. Fast forward, we recently had a hearing with the zoning board appeals. They found that our sign that is on from the building on the noise note state agency and it has moves in the package of the program. So they they determined that the measurement exceeded to thirty two square feet. And total square footage by their by their calculation was forty two point three eight square feet. So we're asking the planning board. It says while the general provision of the town code restricts businesses on thirty two square feet, section thirty eight, one ten, one six, one twelve allows the planning boards to be part of the limit with special circumstances existing. If you are interested in having additional square feet. We took a look at the last during the planning board had and they actually had allowed another business here in town to have fifty three square feet. The town office here has a for the planning board to have eight square feet. Boss equipment has additional square footage and so does it moves out. So we're asking for the additional ten point two eight square feet to allow for our sign and relocation. Any application would address the effect of health, safety or welfare. The signage is located in the building itself. It exists in simple white lettering. There are no free standing signs, structures of support that could put in P traffic flow. And the design itself is subtle and not seem not create the usual distraction. Moreover, it's scaled appropriately to allow for size as double. But ten point two eight square feet will neither create a hazard to vehicles, pedestrian traffic, nor will they just spoil the beauty of the town, which definitely impacts what you can avoid in section thirty eight.
Right, we are live from the public.
Was that the original sign or did you have a permit for a sign before this or?
Yes, it is.
And was that the same sign or?
No, it was a totally different sign.
So this is the first permit for this building, this location?
This, yes.
So it is now for the public. So the public session.
No questions. Alright, so we'll close the public hearing at 6:05. We'll open the public hearing at 6:05 from the please stand and vote please. My resolution is satisfied, United States of America, you two Republic, which stands one nation. Quick form of conflict of interest, any? Jeff, Mr. The Agenda? Public to speak on non agenda items. Review of minutes November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, any to move to accept?
You might be able to move seven minutes from November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four.
What is that, right? On favor. Correspondence. Business conditional use from nineteen Oregon on circle map eleven block three. That application now complete, skip the following hearing. Need a motion that says the same thing? I have a motion to accept conditional use permit from nineteen Oregon on circle as complete. Second. I'll second. On favor. You, this is public hearing on January six PM. January six PM. Ready to motion on that or not? Continuing business, still in zone application sixty south barrow road, zero twenty four block zero thirteen. Back in five years. Any questions on that guy? No question, directing good?
Yeah, good.
Alright, I need a motion to approve or deny?
Yeah, dude, mine is the best.
Oh. I was gonna break right through this. As I read this, it will be my motion. I will be looking for a second. Alright, so Laura Christopher Valerie, right? Sixty South Barrow Road. Number one, standing, the applicant has standing to present this application as owner. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Authority, the planning board has the authority to consider this request for expansion of a structure as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash one of the Rangely Town Code. The co enforcement officer made the determination on October seventeenth, twenty twenty four. The applicant's proposed building permit is within the required setback on the normal high water line of the water body. Ranger Lake. Thought was that, we bonded for a minute. And so the application has been referred to the planning board. That's my motion. All in favor? In determining whether a particular alternative exists as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash one dash two of the Rangely Town Code, the planning board shall consider the following. A, the lot size. B, the shape and slope of the land. C, the location of other structures on property and on adjacent properties. E, the existing architectural plan. F, the potential for soil erosion. Based on three A about the planning board finds there is or is not a practical alternative to retain the original floor area and volume of structure within the required setback. So that would be there is not. That's my motion. I'll second. All in favor? Or due to the nature and size of the expansion, the planning board requests that written notice is or is not mailed from direct to the director butters of the property as part of the consideration for significant adverse impact upon the value and right to quiet possession of surrounding properties. I'm gonna say is. That's my motion. Second.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I therefore, based on the findings in this worksheet and any conditions listed below, the planning board concludes that the proposed project is or is not eligible for the thirty percent expansion while remaining within the required shoreline setback area. My motion is eligible for the thirty percent. I'll second that. All in favor? Conditions, any conditions? We have got security devices, somebody.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I mean, as long, he has the deck now, as long as he doesn't exceed that point. Six, determination based upon proceedings, findings and conclusions. The application for the project within shoreline zone is hereby granted. That's my motion. Second. All in favor? Thank you. All in zone application, one hundred Chestnut Room at zero forty three block zero one five. By the fact of the denial.
Mr. Jared, you have Becky on the line. She may be or may not want to say something.
Good evening. Hello.
Good evening.
Um, I know you were at my, our house today. I wrote a small statement. I don't know if you want to hear it. It's up to you guys.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, please read it.
Okay, thank you. Good evening to the Rangely Planning Board. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Rebecca and along with my husband Joe, we are the owners of the camp at one hundred Chestnut Lane on Quimby Pond. I am not new to Rangely. When I was fourteen years old, my family along with friends John and Brigetta Parker spent special summer weeks on Quimby Pond. I also spent many school vacations skiing on Saddleback Mountain. My love for Rangely continued for the next thirty years and ultimately led us to finding a camp of our own. Before our purchase, we did our due diligence with a home inspection, which produced a decent report and suggested a roof replacement and a leveling of the camp. For the past four years, we have been challenged to find a builder that would follow through in lifting the house and replacing the windows and doors. This past spring, we were given the name of Kennedy Homes and we met them on site multiple times, including mid August. At this time, we asked about permitting. In addition, on July thirty first, I sent a text message confirming that Kennedy Homes would obtain all permits. Work started August seventeenth and we were so excited to be finally moving forward to beautifying our camp. On August twenty first, we received pictures of the rot under our house and from there the project became complicated and larger. We, the owners, realized we should have stopped and reevaluated, we evaluated the situation. Luckily, Mr. Parker drove by our property and we were notified that no permits had been pulled. For this, we apologize to the town and the planning board and all the people who work hard to protect the ponds and waterways of Rangely. Uh, we are here to answer any questions. We have terminated. Uh, we are no longer working with Kennedy Homes and we have hired Ellen Albrecht to, as an architect and a consultant to see us through this process of rebuilding our home. Thank you.
Alright, questions? Alright, we'll do facts and finding. Number one, standing, the applicant has standing to present this application to an owner. That's my motion. Second, all in favor? Authority, the planning board has the authority to consider this request for replacement of a structure as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash five of the Rangely Town Code. Code enforcement officer has made the determination on November fifth, twenty twenty four. The applicant's proposed building permit is within required setback on the normal high water line of the body of water Quimby Pond and so the application has been referred to the planning board. That's my motion. Second. All in favor? Number three, in determining whether a practical alternative exists as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash five dash two of the Rangely Town Code, the planning board shall consider the following. A, the lot size. B, the shape and slope of land. C, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties. D, the location of the septic system and other onsite so suitable for septic system. E, the existing architectural plan. F, the potential for soil erosion. G, the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accommodate the location. Based on three A to above, the planning board finds there is not a practical alternative to retain the original floor area and volume of the structure within the required setback area. That's my motion. Second. All in favor? Four, due to the nature and size of the expansion, the planning board requests that written notice is or is not mailed to the director butters of the property as part of a consideration for significant adverse impact upon the value of right of quiet possession of surrounding properties. I'm gonna say is, that's my motion.
I'll second. Do you want to mail to butters or do you not want to mail it?
Yes, just now, notice to the butters.
We are all granting the application.
Say that again, what?
Yeah, granting the application, what am I sending to the butters?
So they should have been informed. It's your question, due to the nature and size of the expansion, the planning board requests. I would like it if the butters were notified. I, I think it's just common courtesy. After what these people have been through, I'd rather say no, but I say yes to everybody else. That's my motion. We got a second. Please. All in favor? Conditions, if any required to ensure compliance with the above sections of the Rangely Town Code. Do you see anything down there, Breck? Do you see anything down there that you'd like to see? I mean, the septic system is, the whole thing's a mess.
So I think, I think in talking with Becky and Joe and Helen, I think you're looking at Ellen to be their eyes to make sure that things are taken care of on site. Is that, is this correct?
Yes.
So obviously I'll keep my eyes on as well, but um, the only thing that we're gonna try to do is uh, we're gonna see if Cory Baker can get up there and fill that ditch in. That, that's pretty much danger as it stands right now. It's, it's an open ditch.
Anything else, guys?
I mean, I guess the only question we have is we don't really know what they're gonna be doing there yet. It hasn't been decided, right?
Well, there's a good question because we're, uh, we're trying to play catch up here and make everything legal, but they also want to probably, I've worked up a little plan because Cory was gonna throw up. I didn't want to put any drainage or anything in where we had to go backwards again. So I do have a plan and a square footage that we can submit with this that shows what they propose to do. And we're sort of saying that if we could include that tonight, that would be great because otherwise we'll have to come back to the planning board again and if we're trying to get a permit by their February one date, you know, it'd be tight.
You agree with that?
Yeah, I agree with it.
And I can share what we have just so you guys can see.
Let's look at it. Not in my nature to do that.
So you guys were out there today, you have the garage over here, you have the house with the deck. And right now the septic is behind it and so I've gotta keep certain distances from the septic. So when we get full addition we'll probably rebuild, you know, all of us apartments, but the addition would be off toward the back away from the lake. And um, I think it is, um some square feet is starting to think is what they have now, the footprint. Um, which is like oh, eight hundred and sixty eight square feet. If I take thirty percent, it's like two hundred and sixty square feet, so it's.
What else? Two thousand four three.
Well, whichever is larger and I think we're gonna be.
You're well within that.
Right. And so we're trying to step back from the lake, stay away from the septic, go and stay away from the well.
It's a tidal spot.
It's a tidal spot. Yeah, yeah. And their septic system is rated for three bedrooms and we really only have two.
So is that what you're adding?
Is this part of it that will walk with?
I can't, I can't see it.
Yeah. Borrow those glasses.
No, no, I just say tomorrow.
Yeah, so the deck that was out there, we're just gonna reattach that. It does this part now that.
So I'll have your, I'll have the aerial pushed up against that. So thanks. What happens with that? I mean, it's all high compared to what it was.
Let's see, some of it is, but the deck is really out there. There's not a whole lot of material that they put on the deck out. There's a lot next to it where the whole was. But yeah, they'll reclaim it and put it back. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a schedule to fill on that, that ditch or?
Yes, we had, I had contacted Cory Baker already, but he was, that was before Thanksgiving, right about the time when we submitted and he was away for two weeks and now he's back. So he said, let's see what happens with this rain. Because if he gets in there, we don't want him sinking in the mud and that stuff, so.
Yeah.
But there is some material already there next to the garage that's not, that he could use, so.
So it's just machine time really?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so we will need copies of Ellen's plans to run to you guys and also for the record here.
Yeah, and I can give you these two tonight, but I can send them all at times.
And also you'll need to go through the files because this is gonna be an expansion, so even though we crossed out, we'll have to read between the crossbar lines.
Number five, therefore, based on the findings in this worksheet, in any conditions listed below, the planning board concludes that the proposed project is or is not eligible for the thirty percent expansion while remaining within the required shoreline setback area is eligible for the thirty percent. That's my motion. Second, all in favor? Okay, number six, determination based upon proceedings, findings and conclusions, the application for this project within shoreline zone is hereby granted. That's my motion. Second, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, congratulations, Joe. So I'll, I'll, I mean, yeah, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Alright, continuing business, still in zone application thirty four thirty two Main Street, that's zero zero seven block zero zero three. Facts, findings are thoroughly announced. Alright, number one, standing, the applicant has standing to present this application as owner. My motion. All in favor? I'll need to wait for, for now. Want to keep roll?
Yeah, keep roll, okay.
Authority, the planning board has authority to consider this request for replacement of a structure as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash five of the Rangely Town Code. The code enforcement officer made that determination on November fifth, twenty twenty four. The applicant's proposed building permit is within required setback on the normal high water line of the water body Ranger Lake and so the application has been referred to the planning board. That's my motion. All in favor? Three, in determining whether a practical alternative exists as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash five dash two of the Rangely Town Code, the planning board shall consider the following. A, the size of the lot. B, the shape and slope of the land. C, the location of other structures on property and on adjacent properties. D, the location of septic systems and other onsite so suitable for any septic system. E, the existing architectural plan. F, the potential for soil erosion. G, the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accommodate relocation. Based on three days, you browse the planning board files, there is or is not a practical alternative to retain the original floor plan, original floor area and volume of the structure within the required setback area. My motion is not. Second, sorry, all in favor? Four, due to the nature and size of the expansion, the planning board requests that written notice is or is not mailed to director butters of the property as part of a consideration for significant adverse impact upon the value and right right to quiet possession of surrounding properties. Is, that's my motion. Second. I'll second. All in favor? Do we have to read five on this one?
No, it's not special.
Conditions, if any required to ensure compliance within, with the above sections of the Rangely Town Code. Conditions? Six, determination based upon the proceedings, findings and conclusions. The application for this project within shoreline zone is hereby granted. That's my motion. Second, all in favor? This is the most of these we've ever won that, I think. Condition, twenty one ninety eight Main Street, that here to four block zero one five A. Findings are fact approved or denied. Approved, I'm sorry. Let me read that again. Approved table or denied application. What is the benefits to tabling this?
You can, if you, if you need time to learn what we're all talking about and kind of time to, to know that, you've got thirty days. You can literally take that time and make a decision to find your path on the next meeting.
I do have one question in regards to height. What's the maximum height from the ground? Does anybody measure that? I, I did notice that.
Yeah, it's, it's just twenty feet, I believe. The roof line, roof line, top of your roof is, remember?
Like the top of most of the ground.
Yeah, so can't see twenty feet, I.
It, it is within your twenty.
I think, I think you mentioned our school fire station. We went up there and looked. It was, well, I got, I got up on the ladder. It was, uh, I think it was within the twenty foot mark.
What's the square footage of this roof itself?
Eight point seven, eight point seven. Rec, recogent from the ladder track.
So, oh, I got a question. If this were to. The letters are small. Everything got brought together, would we be in? Is Carl, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Carol?
Can you hear me?
Um, yeah. Leo had a question.
Uh, the question of if the letters were all brought together, would it still meet, right? So this went to zoning board of appeals and I believe they ruled it should be. Right, noise is one area and real estate is a second area. Breck, is that correct?
That's correct. Real estate agency, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess if they were shrunk together and were under thirty-two, yes?
They would, they would be under thirty-two square feet.
If the moose was removed, yeah.
Okay, so. When we, when I took over the agency, we branded that. The way that that gets spaced out, the way it's spaced out, so there's people on that to make that sound.
Okay.
That's how you have it. That's part of, that's the new logo basically for the North Real Estate.
So as it stands, the, the spacing is part of the logo?
It's part of the logo. And, um, as far as the moose is concerned. I took over the agency in January twenty-one. The former owners, there's two other former owners that use a moose. There has been a moose on every lawn sign, on every advertisement, and I've got fifty of all of that for the last twenty-six years. So there's been a moose in there. That's why we put it on the new build. And, um, that's why we're interested in asking for the additional ten square feet and twenty-two, two eighty square feet to add what we have. These things are, both of these are technically part of our logo. That moose is part of our logo and the way that lettering is.
Spaced.
Spaced, right.
Did the original couple have a sign permit attached to it or was it separate? Was that separate?
They, they did have, uh, I'm sorry, but they did for the twenty-three eighty-eight Main Street.
This was a new building, so.
This is a brand new building.
So it's offsetted.
And we, we hired, um, sign works down in, um, Farmington to provide us. You know, take what we have, cards or logo, and provide us something that looks pleasing on that building. That doesn't look, you know, over, you know. You know, that it spoils from what the town is trying to do with their sign works. And, um, it's just that. We didn't know or didn't feel that it was over the thirty-two square feet. The way that the ordinance is written is ambiguous. We were reading it one way and Breck's office was reading it differently. So, um, we took it to the zoning board of appeals to try to find out. And through, come up with this ten point two X or P more and we're asking the planning board to give us that additional. Where, where do, how to put this thing to death.
I guess I don't see why we can't just shrink the sign and it'll still be a pleasing sign. That's my opinion.
The, uh, the board had, um. Just asked me to provide an additional square footage of the fifty-three square. The, if you go out in front of this building. Those letters, um, what's the fire station, those are, those are separate. They have a permit to do eighty-eight square feet here. So that's way more than what we're asking. Like, don't, what we're asking.
Who is the fifty-three square foot?
Our faith theater?
That's a special circumstance. I think the fire department is a special circumstance. I don't think a business is a special circumstance.
Well, Moose Alley is. But so, so is the boss.
I saw that in your, your notes, but wasn't that primitive? The, yeah, that was prior to any of the sign work stuff. And those two signs that you actually noted in this paperwork are the two signs that are the whole basis for this new sign ordinance. They're the ones that created the problem.
I, I understand, say that again.
So Moose Alley and thought, however, those two signs are not compounding. But they were passed prior to the new sign ordinance for the town of Ray's. They were shot through in the dark, let's just say. So.
We know boss equipment, when they put up the, this has been recent. When they put up the gas station, that big huge gas station, that has been recent.
Yeah.
And they came to the planning board and they had, and we looked through the files, there's big huge prints of what they have. And that is well over what we're at. That accurate?
Any prior planning board approvals have no bearing on this request. So the Moose Alley was proved to be in violation. It was given violations. It was brought to the select board for action. They did not take action. This has been consulted with the town attorney numerous occasions. There is no precedent that has been set that this board has to follow based on the no action or action of another committee. So this should be looked at as what is the special circumstance for this particular application? Which necessitates the need from a deviation from the ordinance? And to answer the gentleman's question earlier about was a signed permit included in the original conditional use permit? The answer is no, there was no sign application included. This whole sign issue started due to a violation being given to the owner. And we've gone through the appeals process of that. An application was filed after the fact. And now we're here, um, with this request. So to the question of what about these other buildings? From all the conversations and information we've been provided. Any prior approvals of any other property has no bearing on this application and this should be reviewed independently.
So I, you, you were, we hired sign works down in, um, to provide us with some. You hire a contractor and he tells us he does all the scientific attack. Not once was it mentioned that there's a sign ordinance or that they need a sign permit that would be signed. I was unaware of that. As a matter of fact, the day that I went to Farmington. This gentleman was going to let me know when he was going to come up and we were going to look at the sign. It's going to help him, um, you know, decide where on the building it was going to fit. I came back from my trip from Farmington, the sign's up. That sign was up for three months. It was November of last year and Carl gets in touch with me in February, the end of February, twenty-eighth of February. To, with an email, it says, hey, I was just checking your per, your permit for your building. And that's coming up in May to expire. And we were diligently trying to get that done. But he says, oh, by the way, you don't have a sign permit. So we went and asked him, I responded to that, asked him where I can get a copy of the, uh, sign application. And where I could find the sign ordinance. I did, within a week, I submitted an application. We gave him a lengthy thing, how it would fit the ordinance. And, um. Uh, Carl disagreed with us on that. We asked to put a pause on this. So that we could get a legal opinion. We get a legal opinion from the attorney. The attorney came back and said, you were within the thirty-two square feet. If you look at, on this, on these pages on the back. There's the sign and that gray represents a thirty-two square feet. And that's how they cut those letters out of a sheet, a sheet of, a four by eight sheet. And so we felt that we were within that because truly the only thing that is the sign. It's not the building itself, it's the letters themselves. So.
This, this is why I asked if, if spacing, spacing of the letters was integral to the, to the sign. And the answer is yes. So my opinion is based on that. We're looking at, we're looking at a rectangular box around the words, not, not just the area of the letters themselves.
And that, and that's what the determination ought to be, of the, um, zoning board of appeals.
Correct, correct, yeah, um.
So even the zoning board of appeals, Brian for the zoning board of appeals was, he's like, just go to. He recommended that we go to the planning board and just get the additional square feet here and put this thing to death. That continually in, you know.
I just think, my opinion is, is that, you know, like you had said earlier. We have two businesses in town. Um, I do agree with Lee that. You know, what's here on the fire station is a, is a set, separate set of guidelines, if, if you will. You're talking about a municipality and you're talking about a, a fire department, you know?
But the municipality as the ordinance has to follow the same guideline.
Well, what I would say to you is, is that, you know, you listed two businesses, commercial businesses. And as a result of their signage, this is why we have, this is why we have a sign ordinance.
Yeah, there was a sign ordinance back when, when, um, Moose Alley, um. There, that sign ordinance is only twenty-five square. There was a sign. And this has been changed to thirty-two square. And there are other businesses that the planning board, I'm only pointing out that there is other businesses. That the planning board has been additional square footage.
Not, not this plan.
Just did last, the last meeting. Pretty far as they.
Right, which is a special. It's the only.
They're, they're actually individual special case. That's why we come here.
Right, and you're asking us if we agree that it's a special case, right?
We know their best one year criteria.
All right, so there's a couple of things. One is, you measured the sign. You're a hundred percent sure that that thing's one third square, no matter what. Each letter has been measured. Moose has been measured. The sign itself is in the ordinance, but the moose itself is a moose.
Lee, the zoning, the zoning board of appeals made a ruling on the moose that it should be included.
So I'm going to go through this and the board can decide one way or the other. So remember, at the end, we have. Yes, good, yeah. I honestly, this, some of us have lived in town or visited. I've lived in town my whole life. This sign ordinance has been like the biggest spike ever. I don't know why it's easy for everyone to pick out what someone does or doesn't do on their property in this town. I feel our businesses in town are the backbone just as much as the community members itself that work. I almost want to kind of shrink it to make it happen more. But when you pull out of Pleasant Street, you look at a sign that's been there for years. You creep forward to look for traffic. You even pull out of the shop where I am, you stare right at the sign. I don't think a sign being on a building is actually. I, I feel a sign on a side of a building is actually less of a headache. Than actually one on the sidewalk or just off the sidewalk. You pull out of Depot Street, you look at the Range League remodel site. Um, I don't have a problem with any of the signs in town. This isn't taking up any more space than, than the actual building. I don't. I don't know if we supposed to call this a special purpose, but I honestly don't have a problem with the sign where it's at. Yep.
Yeah, I did, neither's a forty foot tall building in the middle of the woods blocking out the view, but we're going to say, no, you can't build it that tall.
Right. It's like, it's a nice looking sign, you know? I'll tell you, it's a nice looking sign. Yes, it's on a nice looking building. But to sit here and say, you know, we'll vote on it, but to sit here and say that it's a special circumstance, it's not. Unfortunately, it's not. But despite this, so I'm going to read through this. Remember. We have the ability to table it. I think the only thing that if we tabled it, we would actually want the cut sheet from sign works. Because right now I trust you with the table. However, in fairness to Earl Bowlin. We probably should have that cut sheet from the sign company that says exactly how many square inches it is times X amount of feet. And get it. So is he actually asking for ten extra square feet or is he asking for five? Or does, like the picture he depicted, does it actually fit into a thirty-two square foot piece of wire? That, what you have there with the gray background, that came from time. Right, so. Not saying it didn't, I'm just saying if we table this, it would be for the one reason that I can think of. Would be to thing that cut sheet. And if that cut sheet says it's over thirty-two square feet, then we'll deny. It's not over thirty-two square feet, then we'll approve it.
So this, let's do something thin. I mean, you could cut that out of thirty-two square feet, but on the building, it's bigger than thirty-two square feet. You know, that's, they're saying that's thirty-two square feet. They cut everything out of it. When you place it in, you square it up on the building, it's not thirty-two square feet. You know, there's no space between these words. There's space between the letters on.
Right, but are we, so we're counting from this area here from N to S and everything you've been in?
Correct.
Chapter thirty-eight states you take the smallest geometric shape encompassing all letters, logos. You know, in the sign. And when we went to zoning board of appeals. They determined the sign should be calculated by the moose, a, a small geometric shape of the moose. So Breck, I don't know if you used a triangle or a square. Then the words noise is one rectangle and the wo, the words real estate is another rectangle. Those three areas were calculated by Breck on the building. And added together. You're not going to get a better square footage than the actuals installed. Due to exactly what was, was said, that it was cut out on a four by eight, but installed can be much larger.
Exactly. When you're actually picturing the whole thing, I can see.
No, I understand. So I was, I was misunderstood. I was. No, I understand it really. So I was, I was misunderstood. I was. I was under the impression that the letters themselves couldn't exceed thirty-two square feet. I was not aware that you encompassed the entire area. Yeah, that's why.
Which is, I just question, if you, if you brought those letter in.
Right.
Then you would reduce on that square footage.
So not that we really need to rehash. But the ordinance, the, the ordinance itself, itself. Gives an exemption. We feel, and we've always felt, that it gives an exemption. For the space between the left. If it had a backer board, then it is the size of the backer.
This was ruled on by the zoning board of appeals. This is what we have to go by.
Speak, please.
It was ruled on, so.
Can you let me speak? So what's distinguishable? From the rest of the billboard, from a support for a billboard. And I have the legal opinion, correct, and give to the, to the board here so that they can read it from an attorney. Okay, we had a legal opinion done. It says because those letters are indistinguishable. That, because the background seems to be distinguishable. From the letters, from the sign itself. The letters themselves become the sign. So we submitted that, handed the cut sheet as Lee said. We asked Sign Works to put that on a four by eight sheet, thirty-two square feet. Which comes up.
Alright, I'm going to go through this. Earl Bowen, no zero state, eighty, see, twenty-one thousand eight Main Street. Now, zero, zero, four, block, zero, one, five, dash, eight, December eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Number one, standing. The applicant has standing to present this application with an motion. That's my motion. I'll second that. All in favor? Authority, the planning board has the authority to consider this application by the proposed use being listed in section thirty-eight, uh, six, dash, six. And thirty-eight, dash, ten, dash, six, dash, twelve of the Rainsley Town Code. Specifically in the commercial district. The code enforcement officer has made this determination on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Three, in determining the.
Oh, oh, oh.
All, all in favor? In determining the proposed sign size restrictions. As required by section thirty-eight, dash, ten, dash, six of the Rainsley Town Code, the planning board shall consider the following. A, thirty-eight, dash, ten, dash, six, dash, eleven. The size of the proposed sign on a non-residential property does not exceed thirty-two square feet. B, the sign on, the sign is not temporary in nature. C, the sign is not decorative, not a decorative banner. Pendant or message flag. D, thirty-eight, dash, ten, dash, six, dash, five. The sign does not exceed twenty feet in height from the natural surface of the ground. E, thirty-eight, dash, ten, dash, six, dash, eleven. Any departure from the thirty-two square foot requirement of a sign would adversely affect public health and safety or welfare. Based on three eighty above, the planning board finds proposed project. Does or does not violate the sign requirements as outlined in section thirty-eight, dash, ten, dash, six of the Rainsley Town Code. The way the code's written, it does violate. That's my motion.
You're so good.
All in favor? Four, determining the special circumstances exist to grant conditional use approval for a sign exceeding thirty-two square feet. As required by section thirty-eight, dash, ten, dash, six, dash, twelve of the Rainsley Town Code, the planning board shall consider the following. The total sign area is forty-two point two eight square feet. B, set special circumstance. Based on four A above, the planning board finds the post sign expansion does or does not meet special circumstances. My motion is it does not meet. Um, second, you're so good. All in favor? Conditions, if any required.
Opposed.
I'm sorry.
Same.
We have an opposed. You, you read that again. Yes, based on A, four, B, above. The planning board finds the post sign expansion does, but does not meet special circumstances. Good. Here. Conditions, conditions, if any required, to ensure compliance with the above sections of the Rainsley Town Code. Conditions may include, but not limited to, street improvements, access restrictions, hours of use, buffers and screens. Utilities improvement and performance guarantees for off-site improvements, et cetera. Conditions. Any conditions? So you don't want to, sorry.
No, go ahead.
You don't want to see the, that sheet from, uh. Uh, I mean. Sign, mark. So Leo, the way they described it to me was, I was thinking, anything you're thinking. You have to, just the letters of thirty-two square feet, but it's actually the entire encompassing area of the sign, which. Based on the pictures, it's pretty clear. However. If I'm not mistaken, if you took down the moose, you would be in compliance.
Then I'd be involved too square.
Good, that's a simple question.
Yeah.
The canopy over the gas pump, has the word Fabian. So by what you're implying, aren't you saying the whole length of that sign that has Fabian level? Is the sign? Or is that, is that what, what you refer to?
That's.
Maybe the brand.
Right, but that's.
The let's say, so what is the sign with that canopy? Just the name? Just the name. Right.
The Citgo Station across the street, the Citgo, that ward and.
You guys, listen, we need people.
I'm just looking for a case and another kind of straight.
No, we need people in the ordinance community to get to the sign ordinance. Yeah.
Well, I, I, I almost think that you're going to have a second, second thing for, like in his situation. That says your spacing can't be such and such, or the area between your fault has to be. You know, can't be proportionately to the size of the fault. Otherwise, the only way you're going to do it is to be able to reduce the fault in order to fit the footprint. You're going to include the spacing.
I do not disagree.
Somebody that deals with a lot of faults, I'm curious about this. Although, don't, like he's got, I mean, a, a sign. So does anyone, just, does, is a sign defined as having a backer or not a backer? What actually defines the sign?
The code, the, the ordinance reads the, the encompass of the, the letters.
So the way the code reads. It's not meet the requirements. That's all we're going on. That's all we have to go on. That's all we can go. Carl, the input?
What was the question?
The question has always been this sign ordinance that's. Some people break the law, some people don't.
Well, particular to what I, I, I heard, I think is, right. Typically, we get a drawing of a sign early on with a permit prior to it being installed and we're able to review it. Under what chapter thirty-eight says, specific to that sign. And there are many signs which have been applied for which are over square footage, which in conversations get reduced. Um, but the, the rule of thumb, as I've learned from talking to many. Generations back of planning board members and the intent of the sign ordinance was thirty-two square feet comes from a four by eight sheet of plywood. The intent was to keep signage in the town smaller than a sheet of plywood. And if that has changed, or people feel it should be changed, that should be brought to the select board. Can be referred to the ordinance committee, who is currently working on a revamp of the sign ordinance. When they get it to a point, they will defer to the planning board for review and approval. It'll go to a town warrant for a vote. And it can be voted to be changed. But right now, this is a sign ordinance we have. And code enforcement makes rulings based on what is written in there.
Five, determination based upon proceedings, finding and conclusions that conditional use application for this project is hereby. I need a motion on that. Granted. Granted, reliability conditions are denied. Make a motion to deny. I'll second that. All in favor?
Thank you, Bill.
Next meeting, January five, six, eight. I was ready to adjourn the meeting at seven oh two. Motion. Now I have to read.
Yes, I'll second that.
Thanks, Marty.